Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 12, 2018 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:30. At this time, we are here to go into executive session. There is a need for executive session to discuss the litigation regarding Wood subdivision because an open meeting may be a detrimental effect on the position of the town with the intent to go back into open session afterwards. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved in second. The roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
And we are now in executive session, so... Good evening, and welcome back to the regular scheduled meeting. With us right now, we have members of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, and I'm going to turn the floor over to both you now.
Thank you. My name is Faith Hodgkins, and I'm a past president of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, and I'm here on behalf of Jay Pennett, who's our Phone-A-Thon chairperson, but he was unable to be here tonight. The Scholarship Foundation began in 1960, and over the past 58 years, TSF of Wakefield, which is formerly called the Citizen Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, has helped more than 11,000 Wakefield students attain a higher education. Last year, more than 500,000 was awarded to Wakefield full-time students of all ages, increasing the total awarded since 1960 to over $12.1 million. Some of you, I'm sure, have attended our fundraisers. We have an annual fall golf tournament, a winter dance, or comedy night this year. We've had jazz brunches and a very successful trivia team challenge. On Saturday, March 24th, we'll be holding our 38th Annual Phone-A-Thon. Last year, we raised over $53,000 from the Phone-A-Thon, and this was instrumental in allowing us to award $545,000 in scholarships last year to 280 students, and we hope to increase that number this year. I'd like to introduce Rachel Semel, the president of the TSF Student Directors, who will talk a little bit more about the upcoming Phone-A-Thon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hodgkins. I'm Rachel Semel, and I'm the current president of the Student Directors of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield. Before I begin, I would like to ask the other student directors who are with me tonight to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Laura Scanlon. I'm a sophomore, and this is my second year in the club.
Hi, I'm Olga Kaminsky. I'm a freshman, and this is my first year.
Hi, I'm Chloe Joyce. I'm in the ninth grade, and this is my first year in the TSF.
One week from this Saturday, on March 24th, we expect to have between 50 and 100 high school students on hand for the 38th Annual TSF Phone-A-Thon. For the eighth consecutive year, we will be conducting our Phone-A-Thon at the American Civic Center. We plan to call as many Wakefield residents as we can between the hours of noon and 4:00 p.m. on that Saturday, and we hope that everyone will respond favorably to our most important fundraiser of the entire year. We hope to be able to surpass the $53,000 that we raised at last year's Phone-A-Thon. On behalf of the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, we would like the Board of Selectmen to endorse our 38th Annual Phone-A-Thon, and we also ask that you please designate the week of March 18 through March 24 as the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield Phone-A-Thon Week in Wakefield. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Comments from the board? Hearing none.
Best of luck.
Best of luck.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you.
We have a proclamation here, and it does speak to the endorsing its annual Phone-A-Thon on Saturday, March 24, 2018, and it does designate the week of March 18, 2018 through March 24, 2018, as the Scholarship Foundation of Wakefield, Inc. Phone-A-Thon Week in Wakefield, and urge all citizens of the town to cooperate in this campaign. So, we do have a proclamation for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for inviting us.
Keep up the great work.
After you do the minutes, one can come up and do the...
Yes, okay.
...drafts and get out of here.
Let's move, please, into the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular board minutes of February 26, 2018.
So moved.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the executive board minutes of February 26, 2018.
So moved.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I was not there. Can you do things?
Very good. Thank you. At this time, let us move to item... If I can find it.
Let's see.
See, thank you. Snow and Ice overdraft with Mr. Stinson. You have a piece of paper that was given to us from Mr. Mayo and Mr. Stinson regarding an overdraft request. Mr. Stinson or Mr. Mayo?
Well, Rick is here to answer any questions. Other than putting a big biosphere over the town so we don't get any snow this weekend. The overdraft in your package was $200,000. We did up it today to $300,000, so we're requesting a $300,000 snow and ice overdraft. I don't know if we're going to use it all. I hope that we don't. I hope we're not back for more. If we don't use it, then it doesn't affect the tax levy next year. I don't know if Rick wanted to add anything.
No, just, I don't know. The last storm, we have not calculated yet, and we were slightly over the appropriation at town meeting prior to that storm. We had a lot of tree damage, as you know, in that storm, which is all part of the cost. And this storm that's coming tonight is going to be pretty hefty, so we could be back here. I don't know. But I'll know better once we get all the numbers. And plus, there's still two and a half more weeks, three and a half more weeks of winter, so it's anybody's guess. But we are, if you look on this memo, when you look at the cost of what we spent, we plan on an average winter of 55 inches of snow, which is, the cost is around $1.2 million and change. So we're still quite a bit under that, and we are already at 53 and a half inches of snow, and we'll go over that with this storm.
Thank you, Mr. Stinson.
We're already, we'll be over on how many times we plow. We plan on seven. We're at seven. This will make eight, so...
Thank you, Mr. Stinson. Any comments from the board?
Just one comment. I would ask people to be patient if they call with emergencies because I don't expect them to get a live body. The live body's going to be out on the street helping fix things, so I would just ask them to be patient and leave messages, or it might go to a call center. They may get somebody, but, you know, they're not, they're not ringing the phones 24/7 because they're trying to fix our streets and trees, so thank you.
Ed. Oh, no, good. I just had two questions. One, how do we arrive at the 53 and a half inches? Like, where do we measure that?
We do two things. We measure ourselves, and then we use, there's a spotter in Wakefield, and we'll use his info. There's a weather spotter in Wakefield.
And the other question was, looking at the request itself, I was looking at the contractor's line. Can you maybe just explain a little bit more when we bring in contractors, what that process is as compared with? You know, I'm looking at a lot of money going to contractors, and I'm like, is there a way that we could instead direct those funds, say, to DPW employees? Or, you know, is...
Yeah, short answer's no.
Okay.
When we plow, all DPW staff are plowing. When, in most storms, not all, when we plow, we're using contractors to assist us. The smaller ones, sometimes we'll do in-house, and when I say small, a two-inch storm that we can effectively get around the entire town, because we have 550 roads, we have 250 lane miles of road, and we just don't have enough staff to take care of the entire town ourselves, so... But generally, when we plow, when our staff comes in to plow, we're bringing in all our contractors to plow.
And do we give any preference to, say, Wakefield contractors as compared with the outside of town?
We give preference to equipment size. That's more important than where they come from, so equipment size is what's important.
And do we have people within the...
So if I had, for instance, 50 people with pickup trucks apply from Wakefield, and I had three six-wheel dumps, the six-wheel dumps that came from another town, those are the important pieces.
All right, so just to give it size, and if, equipment size, if we have availability here in towns, a contractor in town versus outside of town, is there any preference given to a contractor within the town?
We go through and generally take who we have had in the past unless they don't work out. They don't work out, we'll release them and we'll bring them back, and then we usually search for people, so we're always searching for people.
So we have contractors in town? I don't know the answer.
Oh, we have a lot. Out of town, in town, a lot.
With the equipment?
Yeah.
Because it would just make sense to me that if we can, you know, have a preference towards contractors within the town, that would seem to make a lot of practical sense to keep our tax dollars within the same town.
Most of the bucket loaders are contractors? I mean, we have a few.
No, we have, we have some of us.
We have some of us, too. But I see a lot of contractors have what there's around as well, too, so, like you said, the size of the equipment, easy removal.
Six-wheel dumps are hard to get now. Most contractors will buy, they're buying either a 10-wheel or a triaxle or a smaller dump, the six-wheel size of stuff.
I guess, just all things being equal, I'd like to see a preference given to Wakefield contractors, if we can do that.
Peter.
Yeah, just a side note. I know I had my phone call today, but the parking ban starts tonight through, I believe, the 14th, Wednesday morning, right? Eight o'clock, so just so the town is aware as well if they hadn't got their phone call and to sign up for the calls in the future.
Tony.
Rick, was somebody at the 246-6306 number? Was somebody...
6306? No. No. The number that, if someone has an issue, generally that will go into the police department or during a storm, they can call 246-6314. But I think, as all of you know, we do not have staff onboard 24/7. So we do not have the ability to answer calls. Once we go, generally how a storm works, they could work 36, 48 hours straight, and when we go home, there's no one there, okay? Because they need to get, obviously, some rest, because they're not robots, so they do need to get rest.
No, I understand. You guys, your staff does a great work job out there. Just a note to the people of Wakefield, don't take to your social media posts and say, you know, looking for a like or a dislike, I'm the DPW is out there plowing roads, so...
Staff work really hard, and when you've been up, you know, 30, you figure they, if you're looking at it this way, this storm, they'll be working probably till Wednesday morning, till at least five or six o'clock. They worked all day today doing tree work, a good majority of them, or other duties. They went home. Most people will not probably go to sleep, or if they do, they get an hour or two sleep, and they'll be back in tomorrow morning by three o'clock.
Okay.
And then they'll be out straight remaining of the time.
I have nothing but praise for the DPW and the White Department as far as how they've been handling the last two storms, so kudos to you and your department, sir.
We'd really love to have any of you ride around for 36 or 48 hours. That would be fun.
Come on, I'm much more fun, so come with me.
Two hours!
Two hours, I can ride.
Two hours. Yes.
Just a other question is, what role in this storm will the emergency management director position play?
Does it? The way, with the emergency management, the, where the thing falls, the storm, or storm, trees and storms would be where the lead when it comes to the, if it was a major fire, it would be the fire department. So those are the people who are the major leads. The emergency management person comes in and assists us when we need to obtain, we needed other equipment from National Guard and things like that, we needed to open the operations center, tracking down other items we wouldn't have. But generally, we try to be self-sufficient with the storm, because in the past, from experience, when you go to get some of the items you need, you generally have difficulty, and they go into, if we need it and someone else needs it that has a bigger need, most of it will go there, so we're pretty well self-sufficient on being able to handle it.
Let's put it this way, we hope he doesn't have a big role. We have to build a shelter or something like that.
Well, just, that's what I'm thinking, though, because this is, I think, the third storm we've had, and it just seems like, while I understand the self-sufficiency piece, if there's power out or, you know, whatever the case might be, if we have to set up a shelter, you know, it seems like having one person running point that would deal with DPW, fire, police, senior center...
Oh, if we have to build a shelter, that's what will happen. That's when he'll come in.
All, you know, all those sorts of, it just seems like, you know, so many other towns have, it feels like, when I'm watching the news, so many other towns have some kind of point person, and then everything else kind of...
When we're contacting each other at 3:30 tomorrow morning, and please don't, he's in, he's in the mix.
The lead, the lead is where the emergency's under, okay? Now, if you have a dual emergency, like power out, and we have trees and snow or hurricane, light departments, the lead on the electrical side, we're the lead on the public works, on the public works portion of it. If there's a major fire, the fire department would be the lead.
Any further questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion...
Nope. No, I'm just saying you need a motion.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve the snow and ice overdraft request for $300,000.
So moved.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Stinson.
Thanks for the luck.
Thank you.
Steve.
Yeah.
Good morning. Tell Steve.
At this time, Mr. Gill, let's start with the presentation and action items with budget
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First budget is the selectmen's budget. We are asking for a decrease in fiscal 2019 of $964 over the fiscal 18 budget. This breakdown is, there is an increase in the water and soil transfer of $3,268, and there was a decrease in the tax levy portion of this budget of $4,232. The personal services decrease of $4,232 includes contractual and negotiated increases. It includes an increase to the social media line item of $35,000. $30,000 of that will be reimbursed from Linfield, and it also removes the Florida position. The main expenses within this budget, the cost to print the town report, $3,000; the advertising line item, $15,000, which is used for advertising town meeting; professional services line item, which is used for the traffic engineer of $16,000, $20,000. The total fiscal 19 budget request is $474,431 with $435,594 coming from tax levy and $38,837 coming from a water and soil transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget of the selectmen at the amount of $474,431.
So moved.
Moved. Discussion. I have a couple of items that I would like to address to Mr. Mayo and also Cross. When we eliminated the Florida position, you are going to consider increasing the social media position on this?
Yes.
And when we do the social media again, are we going to try to do a few improvements to the website?
Yes. Each, the main page, as well as each department's page.
Very good. And as you and I had discussed in previous discussions over the years, is there a way that we can work in putting on a position for Economic Development Director? I know we can't do it for this April, but can we have a discussion and try to get that situated for the November?
Yeah, we could certainly supplement the budget in November if you'd like. I'd like to, and we've spoken about this, I'd like to, I think a number of the board members talk about economic development, as we do more development in downtown and the changes, and what exactly that position is going to be, I need to really flush that out into talking to other communities, trying to find their best practices. I don't want to just hire a department and throw a lot of money at it, and then it doesn't do any good, so I absolutely all-in, but I just need to have a little more...
I mean, with consideration from the board, I think it's a great position for us to have in our arsenal as we move into the future, and that would be someone that would be solely focused on economic development and all the different items that it could entail, and that's where I would like to have this board's okay to push that forward to Mr. Mayo's guidance. So, whether or not we, we don't need a vote or anything, but just so that the board understands.
Yeah, I've been involved in the past. I know I have been a big proponent of it, but in the interim, we're all economic development.
Oh, yes. Yes.
I think maybe, Steve, something I have to think about, just kind of expand the way you approach this. The idea of perhaps, and I think as a board, you can think about this, an Economic Development Council, in that we have some real, real great talent here within our community, and I think we could actually realize significant cost savings by doing that, and, you know, I've, over recent months, been thinking about how we, how that takes form, but I think, you know, taking advantage of the attributes that we have within the community on some sort of a council that we create, might be a way to achieve all the objectives, Paul, that you're raising, without having to have the line item of salary benefits, retirement and the like, so I think we should maybe just be open-minded about that.
Look at both. Look at the whole.
Yeah, because that's, that's where I've kind of been trending for a while now. I think, let's tap into the talent we have without using taxpayer dollars to do it.
Absolutely. Very good. Thank you. That's it for me. Any further discussion on the budget proposal? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Next budget is the accounting budget. We're recommending an increase of $3,123 to the fiscal 19 budget. This increase breaks down 2,0709 to the tax levy, $414 to the water and soil enterprise accounts. There is an increase in personal services of $6,209, which is contractual negotiated increases. Under contractual services, there was a $3,500 decrease. The equipment, the equipment rental line item was decreased $6,200 due to a new copier contract. We increased the professional services line item, $1,500. This is used for the town audit. And finally, we increased postage, $1,200 due to a postage expense increase. Main expenses within this budget, $28,000 for equipment rental, which consists of seven copy machines and two high-speed printers. Under professional services, $54,500, which is the town audit, and $8,000 for postage. The total budget request for fiscal 2019, $401,089 with $382,925 coming from tax levy and $18,164 coming from a water and soil transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget for the accounting department for a total of $401,089.
So moved.
Moved in second, and any discussion? Tony.
The copier that you speak of, do all our copiers come from the same vendor?
Yes.
For all, sound like for the fire department, the police department, they all come from the same vendor?
Yes.
Excellent. We're on our here.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gill.
Next budget is the IT budget. We have Todd Bowden here, the IT director. For any specific questions, for fiscal 2019, we are recommending a decrease in this budget of $37,637. Under personal services, there was a decrease of $52,000. We removed the data manager position from the fiscal 18 budget. It does include contractual and negotiated increases of $18,555. We increased the transfer to the enterprise accounts into the school department by $18,000, and we also decreased overtime by $2,555. Under contractual services, there is an increase, a total increase of $15,563. The major changes, there was a decrease in computer maintenance, $1,095. We are, the work is being done in-house now. There was an increase in software maintenance, $25,653. This is because we removed the transfers to DPW in the school department, and we increased them up into the salaries, so it was basically just moving the charge back from one area to another. We decreased the training line item, $7,595, and we decreased telephone, $1,400 based on current year usage. The total tax levy request for 2019 is $353,021.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget for $353,021 as presented.
So moved.
Moved. Second, and any discussion?
Could you just speak to the school transfer piece a little bit more, so we can understand, like, in context, how much of the ITs, or maybe, Todd, you're better to speak to this, how much of the IT department's work is directed at the school as compared with how much comes out of the budget?
Sure, so we support all of the phones and the switching infrastructure for the schools, so anything that connects all the buildings, the phones, obviously, and we'll extend server support for them as well. That might extend beyond, if they just ask for help with, for instance, a new project we're doing this year is school surveillance. We've got some expertise in that, so we're going to help them out. It's kind of, we just help whenever they need it. I don't know if there's a real percentage-wise of that, but it's a good working relationship that we're building.
I think Todd's being a little modest. On the, on the, on the camera issue, what was the savings when you jumped in, as well as the access point issue?
The savings, we're probably going to anticipate a 30% savings. Access points, we saved.
That's, that's the value that we're getting from, I know that's what Selectmen Dabrowski was going for.
Okay.
So the $120 that we get back from the school department?
Correct.
How did, how has that changed?
It increased from 107 to 120.
Okay.
So it was an increase of $13,000, but we, we removed it from contractual services, and we put it back up into personal services, so the, the transfer was all going to one split now, where before it was being split.
Okay.
Any further discussions from the board? I have a motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Todd. Our next budget item is budget number 20, inspection services.
We have Jack Roberto here tonight.
Mr. Roberto.
Building inspector.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, you're welcome, sir.
For fiscal 2019, we are recommending an increase of $29,683. Under personal services, the increase is $28,483. We removed the part-time sign enforcement position. We added an assistant building inspector position. We also increased the reimbursement that we're going to receive from Linfield by $34,559, and there were $15,319 in contractual and negotiated increases. There was a small increase under contractual services, $1,200 for vehicle allowance. The balance of the budget is level funded. I will point out, the building department's budget is a moneymaker for the town. Jack and his crew do a great job. In fiscal 2017, he brought in just under $1 million in building permits, and year-to-date, he's over $500,000. The total budget request for 2019 is $302,962.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget of $302,962.
I entertain a motion to approve the budget of $302,962.
$302,962 for inspectional services. Some move. Moved. Moved and seconded. Any discussion from the board? Ed.
I have some questions. First, on how do we get other departments to be moneymakers for us?
Ah, that's a good question. Charge more money. Charge more money.
And the more serious question is, how do we end up determining the allocation of the expense to Linfield? Like, how do we, how do we arrive at that number?
We have a longstanding agreement with them, where we split certain person's time by either like 50 or 45%, depending on how we think they're gonna spend more time in Wakefield than in Linfield. So this kind of came in a little bit under the 50%, but there'll also be the same split on the benefits.
So they do across the board?
Yeah.
It's not just salary, it's we're all in.
No, no, across the board, yeah.
Yeah.
And retirement, too. We'll charge back for retirement later on, so.
Right.
I think this is a fabulous department. I think you can even look at the new projects coming in and how neat and clean and, and conforming they are. And that's because our building inspector is there every day, making sure of that. So, it's a great, they do a great job, and we're moving this forward to a lot of booming stuff coming on that we need to get ready for the future, so I'm very grateful for them.
I think adding an assistant, assistant inspector makes a lot of sense, especially rolling the sign enforcement into that, so that person can have a bigger picture view of what's happening. With all the building, I assume that that's something you're in favor of, Jack, having someone help you out.
Absolutely, but, you know, the problem we had with the sign compliance officer is that by statute, he had no authority.
Right.
To enforce. So you have to be either a junior inspector or commissioner, I'm a commissioner, in order to enforce the sign by law. So, he could send out 8,000 cease and desist orders that didn't really, didn't mean too much.
And they could ignore it. So now someone in your own department now can do an enforcement. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Then we've also been mandated by the Commonwealth on other fire escapes, the energy code. Solar is all on the billing department now.
Good. Excellent. Thank you.
Tony.
And just real quickly, Jack, when I get complaints about you all over town, I know you're doing your job.
I don't want people... I told Ted Rignati about 20 years ago, I don't want anyone to like me.
You're doing your job.
Except one, except one person.
We're all in that same group, but thank you.
Jack, you're doing a great job. That's you, yeah.
That's me.
That's the one person. We have a motion that was made and seconded. Is there any end to discussion further? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank. Jackie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the budget is number 34, the library.
Yes, the library budget. We have Catherine McDonald here, and members of the, the board. I'm gonna, Catherine is the new library director for her first budget cycle. I'll give a quick overview, and then if there are any specific questions, Catherine's here to answer any questions. The library budget for 2019, we're requesting a decrease of $2,869 in the salary line item. There was a decrease of $22,177. This is due to retirements, that there, people that are coming on board are brought in at a, a lower salary. But it also does include negotiated and contractual increases. The contractual services has increased $10,499. Materials and supplies, $8,809 increase. The total budget request for 2019 is $1,625,472, with $1,583,848 coming from tax levy, and $41,624 coming from available funds.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. I'll entertain a motion from the floor for a budget for the library in the amount of So moved. Moved and seconded. Any discussion from the floor? Mr. Mayo, do you have, wanna make this?
I just wanna say, I appreciate the level of detail with this. It was, it was very helpful to have all of this, so thank you for that, definitely, and I think your department does a great job, absolutely. On the, the Noble piece, I know that that's something that we've been involved with for a number of years. How is that going? Because I know that we had, I think, some issues, right, a few years back in terms of our, was it our contribution or our engagement with Noble as a town?
There, there was a slight increase at one time.
Okay.
But that's leveled off.
And it's what, like, over 14,000 items have been, have been borrowed, what, in the last year, I think you said in here, I believe, right? Through, through a Noble?
Oh, it's more than that. Yeah. Noble is part, with, we're part of Noble, which is North of Boston Library Exchange, which means that we share materials with all the, actually, with all the libraries in Massachusetts, but specifically with the Noble libraries. It's like one massive collection, and it's probably close to 30,000 that we've, in a year, between 25 and 30,000 in a year, that we, that our patrons will take and that also that we'll ship out to other libraries.
I, I just...
So it's working very well.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it's a great resource. I mean, it just expands opportunity for people in town in a way that we wouldn't be able to do independently.
It's a terrific resource. And I should note that Sharon Gillie was one of the founding members of Noble.
Hmm. Okay.
Yeah.
Ann.
I love the online Noble that I use constantly. I always have, I have books waiting, you know, to come into my queue. I'm reading one now. It's something I, for someone who, you know, for those of us who might work long hours and don't get a chance to go to the library, like I did maybe when my kids were younger, I so love that option. So thank you. And I agree with Ed, the detail on this budget was great.
Very good.
I like all the activities that the library does. You're working diligently on your next big one, the Blossoms event.
Yes. The 28th of April.
28th of April. Get your tickets early, Mr. May.
Come early enough.
Come early enough. Mr. Mayo, could you please?
Can I say, yes. I wanna say, it is a pleasure for me to continue to work with the great library director, so great with Sharon and now with Catherine, so we certainly appreciate the tradition going on there. What I really like about this budget is that, I think, seven or eight, nine years ago, we went to town meeting, we were woefully low on our materials and supplies, on our books budget. Imagine that the library had a low books budget. So much that we always got a waiver from the state to keep our certification. We matched that with ours and what have you. And it was a question that came up at town meeting every year, are we gonna lose our certification? I'm very happy that this year, I can say, we are at or above the state minimum for expenditures on materials and supplies. And it's a great, long journey working with the library, with the library board of trustees, really keeping, keeping in mind where we were with our whole budget process and all being part of the thing together. So I do wanna thank them, and I'm thrilled that actually we are there today. So that's a nice testament for the town, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
The last budget for tonight, item number 45, retirement. Mr. Gill.
Yes, we have Kathy Cheek here tonight, the retirement director. This budget consists of both contributory and non-contributory retirement. Total budget increase for fiscal 2019 is $394,081. This breaks down under the contributory tax levy portion. The increase is $298,118. The non-contrib tax levy portion increased $420. In the water, sewer, and light department transfers increased a total of $95,543. This budget is based on a funding schedule that's been voted by the Wakefield Retirement Board, which runs through 2035, and is based on a January 2016 valuation. I will point out that we will be doing a new valuation as of January 2018, so in the next budget cycle, we'll be using new numbers for these, for this budget. Total budget request for 2019 is $5,840,177, with $4,467,438 coming from tax levy, and $1,192,739 coming from the enterprise transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget of $5,840,177 for the retirement. Some move. Moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion for the retirement budget? Ed?
I was just wondering, the light department, that seemed to be trending differently than the other departments, and I wasn't sure why that was. On page two, it seems that each is growing up steadily, but the light department would seem to be a bit of an anomaly.
Yeah, it's, this is based on the salaries at a particular point in time, that it's the...
September 30th salaries. So it's all the employees of that department as of September 30th. So if we have unfulfilled positions, those aren't included.
So in 18, then presumably there was some unfilled position for the...
For the light department. It could've been 'cause of retirements, it could've been people quitting.
It's like sixty, it was 65,000 less, right, than it, than it is?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you. Right now, I would like to bounce to item number H, traffic advisory committee recommendations. Lieutenant Scory?
What happened?
I don't know.
He was here.
He was right outside the door.
There he is.
Yeah.
Trying to get you out of here.
Lieutenant, thank you. We're trying to move you along as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Traffic advisory recommendations, sir.
Yes, sir. I have some extra paperwork available for you that was not available, and I sent out my original letter. It's a letter from the engineering firm of VNS hanging in Brussels, related to the no turn on red at Lowell and Vernon Street. So the first item that we had in the, from the traffic advisory committee was a complaint from a resident of Houston Street. The resident stated that at least six times, when she was in the crosswalk at Lowell and Vernon Street, she was almost struck by a car that was turning right on red. So myself and Matt Keely, who's an engineer for VHB, we went out, we did a site visit to the intersection. And while we were there, in the short period of time that we were there, we did notice a number of vehicles turning right on red. We didn't get to witness any pedestrians crossing at the intersection, but there were some cars turning right on red. They slowed, didn't necessarily stop, but there was some slowing involved. So in the letter that I included from VHB, Matt cites a couple of items from the manual and uniform traffic control devices that would pertain to making an intersection no turn on red. And one of those is an unacceptable number of pedestrian conflicts with right turn on red maneuvers, especially involving children, all the pedestrians or persons with disabilities. So one of the things that we took into consideration here is the proximity of this intersection to the Dolbear School, and the number of kids that walk to that school. And the other item would be another consideration noted in the MUTCD guidance is the presence of an exclusive pedestrian phase with this intersection. And it has that, it has an exclusive phase. So these, we took these two items into consideration, the number of conflicts that the complainant had, and we decided that with the proximity of the school, the best move here for safety of everybody was to make this a no turn on red at all four corners of the intersection.
Even in the dedicated lane?
The dedicated lane from Vernon onto Lowell. We actually found, during our site visit, that was the worst.
Really?
It was.
There's too many school kids at one.
There is a stop line there, and the traffic light is across the street on Lowell Street, and that happened to be the worst of the four corners.
Let me clarify, I'm not against what you're asking.
Correct.
I would just like you to consider in the future, another intersection in Wakefield that's similar, that we've had before our board in the past, that we haven't taken any action with, and that's at the intersection of church and Narbev.
Correct.
Okay? Because that one's very dangerous, because when the pedestrians have a walk light, people are still making a right turn into them because there's no sign telling them they can't on a red. So you're putting everybody that's coming from the softball field going up Prospect in harm's way by not having a no turn on red sign. I know you've done traffic numbers and such, but I'd rather have you explain what the difference is between the two.
Traffic volume. With Lowell and Vernon, it doesn't have the same traffic volume that North, they have church and Prospect does. And to take that into consideration, making that a no turn on red, I think it would require a formal traffic study based on traffic volume. And that was after speaking with Matt Keely from VHB.
How do we protect the pedestrians, then, when they have the crosslight?
At that intersection?
Mm-hmm.
There is the, it is an exclusive phase pedestrian crossing there. We could put up, we, we've talked in the past, there is a illuminated sign that has been used in the town of Reading that warns drivers of the pedestrian crossing. It is expensive, but it is something that we could look at.
I, I just think that, and I know that I've heard from many people in the Allen Street area, Cedar Street area, and Prospect area, when they try to cross back over again, people just don't stop for them. And, and, you know, bicyclists coming down off of Prospect, it's, it's concern that's been ongoing, and when this came up, I just felt that it was necessary to bring that one up as well, too. I don't know what we can do as a board, but I think something should be done.
I jog around the lake, not as much as Ed, but I do jog around the lake, so I'm very familiar with it. What if we move back the stop line?
I would, I would...
I think that's an engineering question.
Okay.
There is a science to it, and I think with the, moving the stop line back, it's not going to prevent anybody from taking that right on red. If we were to go out and do a site visits in many of the intersections, and just watch the cars roll through the stop line, I'll use, I'll use Vernon and Salem as a good example. If you were to watch the cars roll through the stop signs there, they stop, but they stop well beyond the stop line.
Yeah.
Hold on. Ann.
I, I agree with you that I think having no turn on red at that position of the lake would back up traffic to an absolutely untenable point, but I like the light up. I've seen the light up crosswalk used in Reading, it's used in Andover, and even though it's expensive, maybe we do have one or two at High Volmieres, because as a driver, it's, you stop, I mean, you stop. It's very, it really does highlight when a pedestrian's walking. I also completely lost my train of thought. I had something else that I was gonna say. Oh, let me ask you. So all of a sudden, in Boston, and I haven't noticed in, in Wakefield, if it's the same way, all this, the walk lights change, so I will, there'll be a white walking guy, but the light's green. So cars see a green light, but as a pedestrian, the white walking guy is telling me, I can walk.
So you're crossing against moving traffic?
In, but it's all over Boston, and I didn't know if Wakefield had that, because I've never, with the new lights, you have a green light, but you've got the white walking guy, so I understand why cars think they can go, but so do we. We don't have that...
I, no, we don't, and I hope we never do.
Good. No, 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 I absolutely agree. I don't, it's, it's in downtown.
Don't they usually have a yield to pedestrian sign, too? Because I know what you're saying, it's very confusing.
But it's still a green light.
I know, no, it is very confusing.
Yeah.
I've seen the signs, but again, the, the cars are still gonna drive. I mean, so...
Yes, it's very, it's maybe the last six months. Okay, that's good, we don't have it.
Just one quick, hold on. Okay.
Ed, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do another...
We have VHB working right now, looking at the downtown from the junction all the way to the lake, basically. They're doing an assessment, right, and see, and understand it. I, I know we've spoken about this before, I would like to see them also look at the intersection that Paul's talking about there, because it is such a pivotal, like, point, and it might be something like softening it a bit, as well, having different crosswalks in there, for example, things like that. I mean, they, I've spoken to VHB a number of times, there are any number of ways that you can, you can slow traffic down, you know, potentially, but that is, I mean, we're talking walk the extra mile, for example.
Right.
That's, that's a very tenuous intersection to be crossing, to get to the lake, which is something we're trying to, you know, promote. At the same time, I also think that that is one of our gateways ultimately into the downtown, because it's such a, such a prominent intersection, and we can do a lot more with it than I think we have been doing currently. As a part of that, obviously, safety considerations are paramount, but I think just... That's, that's a very tenuous intersection to be crossing, to get to the lake, which is something we're trying to, you know, promote. At the same time, I also think that that is one of our gateways ultimately into the downtown, because it's such a, such a prominent intersection, and we can do a lot more with it than I think we have been doing currently. As a part of that, obviously, safety considerations are paramount, but I think just aesthetically, too, so it might be like a twofer. So Steve, if that's something that we could have VHB look into and explore, because we, I think there's a lot of great potential there that's really unrealized right now, and there's a lot of safety. I know, to Tony's point, running it often, it's, you kind of just hold your breath when you cross that street sometimes.
Thank you.
Just, I was laughing at the Vernon Lowell intersection situation, where, I'm laughing
because I'm thinking about all the people that go through the quick mark for that right turn, which is, I know, you probably can't do anything about that, but that's just one of those, they cut through.
It actually is a red light violation, to cut through a parking lot.
People do it, like, all the time. So you're thinking about, as Tony was mentioning, everyone knows Dolbear's so busy, and the kids are getting out of school, and cars are just getting sick of waiting, and they do that, cut through. Usually, it's coming down from, like, gingerbread, you know, and taking the right onto Vernon.
We see the same problem at Oak and Main with the gas station there. We have the same problem.
Yeah. Just one more thing about, great point, the blinking yellow lights, I love those, and in front of Dolbear, I think it's, makes a huge difference, especially with the traffic that you get, the school getting in and getting out, but also with the cars parked. It's very, very difficult to see kids until they're into the street, you know, because it's the way the cars are parked right in front of Dolbear, just on the one side.
So they're parking too close to the crosswalk?
I'm not really sure of that, but I just think it's, it's tough, as you're driving through, it's tough, but at least the lights are a big help. But in front of the high school, that's one of those wish list items we've been talking about, to have that same thing that Ann loves, that I love as well.
I've had some discussion with Mr. Stinson from the DPW about putting those in front, in the crosswalks in front of all the schools.
It's just visibility, yeah, just because when they're flying down Farm Street, you know, they're going forty most of the time without even realizing, and sometimes it's just the way the road is set up. And someone was hit a couple of weeks ago, as you probably know, and it's just, it just seems to be happening, and we need just to control that, and I'd also like to have a policeman directing traffic for forty-five minutes from seven o'clock to seven forty-five, and that's another story for another day, but we're transitioning, but that's, that I'll let go, but just wanted to plant the seed. It was just an accident that slipped out.
So the recommendation from the board is going to be that we're going to ask the Traffic Advisory Committee to work with VHB to see if they can come up with a solution, potential solution for, in addition to the NOTAV, Church Street intersection?
I will put that on the agenda for the next Traffic Advisory Committee meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have to make a motion to approve the Lowell Street Vernon Street intersection no-turn-on-red?
Some...
Move second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Second item. We had two merchants, local merchants, visit our Traffic Advisory Committee meeting, and they had developed a plan to help alleviate some of the parking concerns, the downtown area, and their recommendation was to designate some certain parking areas outside of the downtown area for merchants only, and the solution that we came up with was for five parking spaces on Common Street adjacent to Veterans Memorial Park, another three parking spaces on the southbound side of Main Street between the Civic Center and the Galvin Middle School, another three parking spaces in the Smith Street Lot. So the plan was to have these posted and to issue placards to the merchants to put in the vehicles, and that would be from nine AM to five PM.
Would it be a lottery system, do you think? Or would it be a short term, like, for the month? I mean, how would that rotate from one merchant to another?
Probably first come, first served.
Okay.
My biggest hope is that they will actually get used.
I'd love to see them all get used, but the question will become, up would be, how, so if it's first come, first served, they would just have to be known?
Correct. We've also made the parking lot, the Omelette Headquarters, available to the merchants.
Excellent.
So there is additional parking available.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think that this was, a couple of merchants came to, to visit me, and we took it to Traffic Advisory, and we moved it back to this board. This is not the panacea that we're gonna hope, this will take a little bit of the pressure off, but I do hope that, that it is used, because we've tried it once before, and a lot of the merchants didn't take advantage of it, and I hope that they do take advantage of this. I also would recommend to this board that we do charge ten dollars for a year on this. We charge citizens that in certain areas, and I think there should be some value attached to it.
Do we have any...
And the merchants were okay with that, by the way.
So I'm gonna combine two, three, and four into one motion, that we accept the proposal as presented by Lieutenant Scory regarding the parking spaces, and then the operation from nine to five, and as the town administrator recommended, ten dollars fee for those placards.
Can we just chat about this a little bit?
Yes, but that's, that's a motion for discussion.
Sure, seconded.
There you go, no discussion.
So it's concerning to me that we're doing this, and not so hopeful that it's gonna work, so can we put in a little bit of, it's a one-year pilot program, and we'll report back in a year, and we'll see, because I'd love to know if people are using it. I, you know, this is a problem that certain people talk about, other people do not see it as a problem, and so, you know, it's, I didn't know about the Omelette Headquarters. I don't know how many of our merchants know about that, and so, A, let's maybe do a pilot program and report back, and then also, how are we gonna tell the merchants about this and highlight it? Because I just, it doesn't sound like we're creating something so hopeful, and I want it to be successful, so can we talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely.
I think we, in the past, we have, we've done merchant parking, that the merchants know about Omelette, and then they don't want to walk.
We made, we made available parking, years ago, there was a meeting at Town Hall, we made available the parking at Omelette Headquarters, and at the time, the...
American Civic Center.
The parking lot between the Civic Center and the Galvin, and they did not get used at all.
And not because they didn't know about it, I think, just because they didn't want to park a little far away from a business.
But I agree with what you're saying. It should be a pilot program right now, initiate it, and see what happens. If it doesn't work, duly noted, and we'll move on from there to find another solution for the parking, but this is what their merchants asked for, so, and I do appreciate that we're directing them now to Omelette Headquarters as well, too. Yep, good.
Omelette Headquarters, I love the name. How many spots are down there, roughly, just, I mean, I...
If I had to estimate, somewhere between twenty and thirty.
Is it that many? Okay, because I drive by it all the time, I just never thought about, oh, the parking spots.
On occasion, we have to track down some of the business owners, we like to make it their private parking lot and have them remove their equipment, but there are twenty to thirty spots there.
Twenty to thirty, okay. Thanks.
Mr. May, I want to answer Rem's question. We will go door to door, and we will go through social media, and we'll go through, these merchants that came to us, they have a constituency, we'll go through them, too, so we'll make sure that we get that word out.
I appreciate that.
And I like the pilot idea, because you're right.
It was two merchants, right? So we have more merchants of that. We have a new executive director of the chamber. I think there's people, I hear that we tried this in the past, so for me, I'm feeling like it's a little broken record, and the ten dollars isn't gonna make any big changes. And, you know, it's not that far of a walk, and so, so I just, I just want to put this out there, and we spent so much time, and then nothing changes, so.
Thank you. Are you good? Ed?
I guess maybe I have a little more optimism about it, because too many merchants realize that when other merchants are parking in front of their buildings and in front of their shops, then they're not allowing for parking for, for customers to come. So, and that's been, I think, something that more merchants are tending to realize now, which I think is important. So I think anything that we can do to promote, you know, creative, you know, parking solutions, I think is, is a step in the right direction. One question that, that I have is just in terms of the sign itself. When I first read this the other day, it said local merchant parking only, and I actually, for a moment, was like, wait, does that mean that if you're going to a local merchant?
I had the same...
Yeah, I thought it was like a little bit, a little bit confusing, actually, so I don't know to what extent we could maybe just change the wording a little bit on the sign, so it's a little bit clearer.
Yeah.
Because it was, I thought, okay, if I'm going to a local merchant, I should be parking here. It was...
I understand.
Very good. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lieutenant, one more, item five.
Next request was for a handicap parking space on the southbound side of Main Street in the area of number six eighty-one. There is a family that lives in that area that has a daughter who has some physical disabilities, I don't want to get into the nature of it, but it's posing a hardship with the handicap van. They live in a multi, multifamily dwelling, it has one driveway, so they are looking for a handicapped space out on Main Street that would help them load and unload their child from the van. This would not be exclusively for that family, it'd be available to anybody with a handicap placard. There is a eye doctor in the area, there's a chiropractor as well, so it would be available to everybody to use, but it would provide, would help alleviate some of the hardship for this family. So we are recommending that the handicapped space be on the southbound side of Main Street in front of number sixty, six eighty-one, rather, approximately twenty feet southbound from the driveway.
Have a motion on the floor to, second, any discussion on it?
Tony? What is the fine for parking a handicapped?
I believe it is one hundred twenty-five dollars.
Is that subject to, do we just set that locally, Steve? At one twenty-five? I would love to see that increase. I think you are the lowest. Is it okay? You are the lowest low, you do that.
There are some other violations involved with parking the handicapped space. There's fraudulent use of a placard, which I believe is two hundred fifty, five hundred dollar fines.
Tack it all on.
Tony wants a Denver boot, too.
I want Howes out there, Tony.
Ed? Do we have any sort of, like, process that we follow in terms of determining how many handicap spots and where they should be? And then also with situations like this, where it's somewhat specific to, to a family, is there any sort of tracking we do, so say, for example, the family moves, then do we reevaluate at that point?
We have done that in the past, I believe it was Army Street, where we had a handicap space, and the family moved. In this particular case, where the eye doctor is there, as well as the chiropractor, I think it's a handicap space that's useful to the whole area and should remain if the family were to move.
Sure, okay.
And to answer your first question, I think the Commission on Disabilities could probably answer that better than I could.
Yeah, we do have a listing of all of them in town, and Lieutenant is right, a few years ago, we did remove one on Army Street because the family moved away, there wasn't a need for it. So, yeah, we do track and make sure, and they're very adamant about going to new meetings, new developments when they come in in front of the Traffic Advisory where the handicap spaces, so there is a pretty good vetting process.
I just want to make sure that we have enough, certainly, but also that they're well-placed and best utilized.
And you'll know, when we do do events downtown, we add them. We add temporary ones, so, yeah. We work very closely with Lieutenant does.
Any further comments on this motion?
I think it's a great idea, and it's good, it's dual-purpose, too, I think it's super.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Lieutenant, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you. Have a good night.
We are now going to go to item...
Before that, on the farm lane.
B, right? Because we did everything else.
Terrant Lane.
Yep. Terrant Lane, presentation.
Mr. Regnante. Mr. Chairman, Steve, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity for myself and my team to come here this evening. We're here to give you an overview and a general presentation of a 40B development that we have proposed and are in the process of preparing for property at Terrant Lane here in Wakefield. For the record, my name is Ted Regnante, I'm a local attorney with offices at 401 Edgewater Place here in Wakefield. With me tonight is Jesse Shoma, my associate, who will be putting some things up on the board for you to see, Anthony Bonacorso, who is the developer and the owner of the property, Chris Sparrages in the rear from Williams &amp; Sparrages, our engineer, Bob Schaper, who is our architect, and Mark Fugia, who prepared a financial impact analysis. So we will be filing, probably within the next couple of weeks, with Mass Housing for a project eligibility letter, and for those of you who are not familiar with the 40B process, before you can file with the Zoning Board of Appeals, you need to get a project eligibility letter from Mass Housing, in which they will do an initial review of the project and determine whether or not the project meets the subsidy guidelines and the guidelines of 40B. As part of that process, they will send a letter to the Board of Selectment inviting comments. So the reason for this meeting this evening is to give you an idea of the project, so that you'll be able to, if you wish, to respond. I'm very familiar with 40B, I kind of concentrate my practice in land development, land use development, and particularly in 40B. I've probably done fifty projects to help the Commonwealth. The most recent one I did in Wakefield was the Americana Apartments at 415 Lowell Street, which I worked very cooperatively with the Zoning Board of Appeals. In the beginning, there was a lot of opposition to, to the project, and we worked with the neighbors, we worked with the town, and we worked with the Zoning Board of Appeals, and came up with a project that everybody was happy with at the end, and in fact, has received accolades from the Zoning Board of Appeals, who was intimately involved in the planning of the project, in the details of, of the architecture and landscaping and layout. You have an extremely well-qualified Zoning Board of Appeals. So let me give you a, an overview of the project, and I, and then I'll have each member of the team talk about the area within their jurisdiction, and I would respectfully ask you to hold your questions to the end, because we might address them during the process. So this development is on a 3.75 parcel of land located at Terrant Lane on Hopkins Street, and the property now contains twelve single-family homes, which are accessed from Hopkins Street by the private driveway known as Terrant Lane, also known as Torrance Lane. That project, as I know you're familiar with, was taken by the United States government. The property was taken by eminent domain, by the United States government in nineteen fifty, for a Nike missile base. Following the closure of the Nike project, the site was transferred to the United States Coast Guard for officer housing, and then a few years ago, the property was discontinued for the residential use, and it was determined that it was no longer necessary for government purposes. And Anthony purchased the property in December of two thousand and seventeen at a, an auction that was conducted by General Services Administration, which was a very active auction. The property site is separated from most of Wakefield by Route 128 to the south. To the west, there's a single-family residential neighborhood, and to the north and east, there are two other 40B housing developments, one in which there's a fourteen-unit townhouse-style condominium, and the other one, which is Wakefield Vista Apartments, is a two-building 40B rental development with a hundred and fourteen units. North of this development, across the Reading line, is the Summit Towers housing complex. So what we're proposing to develop on the site is a hundred and ninety units in three, five-story buildings. One building would have, I'm sorry, there would be a hundred and twelve one-bedroom units throughout, fifty-eight two-bedroom units, and twenty-three bedroom units in the three buildings. Very important in that the buildings, when we looked at the site, we proposed to situate them on the south side of the property, so that we could create a buffer between the neighbors to the north in the townhouse condominium. The orientation of the buildings in relation to each other creates an outdoor courtyard plaza between the buildings and a thirty-five hundred square foot community space with a meeting room and a rental office. This project is located in a single residential district, so that waivers will be necessary in zoning to allow the multifamily development. There'll be a total of two hundred and ninety-nine parking spaces, of which a hundred and sixty-five will be below the buildings and a hundred and thirty-five above the ground, so there'll be one point five seven spaces per unit, will actually be in conformity with the parking requirements for, in the zoning. Sewer is available by a connection on Hopkins Street. Above ground utility lines provide for electric... on Hopkins Street. Above ground utility lines provide for electric, cable, internet, and telephone service. And the site is presently serviced by the Town of North Redding for water. And the developer has received a commitment in writing that Redding is willing to continue providing that service. Very importantly, from a point of view of forty-B and the town's planning, twenty-five percent of the units, of course, will be affordable. By having the twenty-five percent affordable, the town is able to count all one hundred and ninety units on its inventory. So this is different. If this were a home ownership project, the town could only count the twenty-five percent that are affordable. But because the regulations are drafted to encourage rental housing, all of you units will count. In the Town of Wakefield, the affordability percentage is seven point two percent, or seven hundred and fifty-eight units. The required percentage, that is the ten percent, the town is presently two hundred and eighty-eight units short of that amount. So when Terrant Lane comes on, assuming that is approved, with a hundred and ninety units, all of those units will count and will bring the town to nine point one percent, only ninety-eight units short of its ten percent. So I know the goal is to, as the goal is in many communities, to reach the ten percent because once you do that, the town is able to fight off these forty-B developments that come in people's neighborhoods and that are not well-received. So with that having been said, let me turn it over to Chris, who can give you a more detailed explanation of the layout.
Thank you, Ted. Members, for the record, my name is Chris Sparrages. I'm a registered professional engineer here in the Commonwealth with offices located on North Main Street in Middleton. We're a firm of about twenty professionals, civil, professional civil engineers, professional land surveyors, wetland scientists. We also run several field crews. I live next door in Sagus with my wife. We've been there for twenty-five years and I've refereed a lot of freshman JV and basketball games next door here through the years as well.
Oh, who they got.
Always very fair.
I think that's pretty now.
I just want to go into a little bit more detail, and I'm going to be referring to the handout that you have that also has the nice photos that are up on the screen. So a little bit more detail on the site. A lot of time was spent in trying to figure out how to site the buildings in a way that we were going to provide the least amount of impact to the existing neighbors. Ted mentioned we're tucked away. We're up in the northwest corner of Wakefield, right near the Redding Town Line. Hopkins Street, north is up the plan, okay? So south is down and west is to the left and east is to the right. Our western border here is Hopkins Street. To the south, one of our property boundaries is one twenty-eight. And as Attorney Rignante mentioned, the Legacy Park condos, which is this grouping of fourteen condo units, directly above the project, as does the Wakefield Vista Apartments, which are a hundred and fourteen rental units in these two buildings here. And of course, our site, our three point seven five acre site with the existing homes. The town line is just beyond the existing forty-B projects. Just to the north here, this grouping of projects on Gazebo Circle is a hundred and thirty-two unit condominium project. And the Summit Terrace condominiums are in the Summit Village condominiums over in the northeast, just over also our various types of multifamily developments. The South Street neighborhood is located to the west here of Hopkins Street. There are six existing single-family homes in Wakefield and some more if you were to travel down South Street into Redding. There's a little bit of a neighborhood on that side as well. In the existing condition, our site, as you can see from the highway, there's a, you can zoom in on this grayish color here. There's quite an exposed rock face. And regional mapping tells us that we have shallow to ledge on our site up on top of the hill. That's something that we're going to be dealing with as we take a look at stormwater and our other utilities. The next slide just zooms in a little bit closer, just to give you an idea of the existing layout. What this slide doesn't show you is that South Street is essentially directly opposite the current driveway entrance for the project at Terrant Lane. And we're going to use that as our proposed entrance to one of the entrances that you're going to see on the proposed plan. We'll switch quickly over to the next plan. This plan up on the screen shows an existing conditions plan that shows some of the existing topography of the site. And although laser pointers don't work on the screen there, some of the site slopes off towards one twenty-eight, some of it slopes out towards Hopkins Street, and some of it also slopes off to the north and to the west. So it is a little bit of a local high point here. Next slide, please. This is zoomed out quite a bit. The white line shows you the town line. And this does show our property there highlighted in a light green color and the three proposed buildings. And as we go to the next slide, as we zoom in, you'll see that what we've done is we've pushed the three proposed buildings to the southern part of the property. And what that's doing for us is it still allows a southern, nice southern exposure for the fourteen townhouse units that are but us, as well as the Wakefield Vista Apartments over here. This allows us to have a nice landscape buffer between our proposed project and the neighbors to the north and east. The main access into the site is going to be maintained, and it's a central access driveway on the surface that comes in and accesses one of two areas of parking. There's one in the back that allows a circular pattern and a turnaround, if you will, and also a circular pattern of traffic flow around this island of parking. We propose a secondary surface access on the northern end of the site. And as you look at these, this proposed parking layout, all of the driveways are twenty-four feet in width, allowing for two-way access. We've also used our computer modeling programs that take very large vehicles, such as the town's ladder truck, through the site. And we've been able to prove through that modeling that the fire truck, the town's fire truck can easily access and turn around in these areas on site. Going to the parking in detail in a minute, but there are two additional access driveways that we're proposing on Hopkins Street that are going to be access points to the underground parking for the complex. And they're in front of Building One, which is the building that's closest to Hopkins Street. So parking, as Attorney Rignante mentioned, we're proposing two hundred and ninety-nine spaces. A hundred and sixty-five of them are going to be located underneath Buildings One, Two, and Three and the central courtyard area. It'll be an underground parking complex that will be partially exposed because of the drop in grade that exists along one twenty-eight. So there'll be open air on this side of the building and then completely under the ground on the remainder of the site. And you'll have two-way access points in and out of the garage here and here. The remaining spaces that make up the two ninety-nine, a hundred and thirty-four parking spaces are on the surface, as I pointed out earlier. The access to the site, as I mentioned, will be safe and adequate. And we'll be reviewing this in detail with police and fire as we continue through our approval process. In addition to regular parking spaces, we are also providing a series of handicap accessible parking spaces, which will be available in the surface area and in the underground parking. And of course, with the building configuration the way it is, a podium of parking plus four levels, there will be elevator access to all of the levels of the buildings. I'll just transition quickly into a little bit more detail on the utilities. As Attorney Rignante already mentioned, there is a town sewer available to us. This is the end of the Wakefield sewer in this general neighborhood, and it flows to the south under the highway and then continues into the remaining collection system that the town maintains. For the existing condition, as far as public water, as Attorney Rignante mentioned, it is supplied by the Town of Redding. Electricity, of course, will be provided by the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. Our research tells us that there is no natural gas available at this location. And our client is looking into newer technologies for heating the structure using electricity moving forward. We'll work out those details as we continue through the process. Finally, we're going to be working very closely with Mike Collins on the stormwater management design for the project. And although in the existing condition there are no wetland resources up on top of this site on the hill that we're located, we are still going to be following DEP's stormwater management regulations with regard to stormwater management and working closely with Mike to make sure that we're meeting all of those ten standards to protect the existing folks that live around all of our sides. That is the end of my presentation, Ted.
Well, do you want to come up and talk about the building?
Good evening. Rob Schaefer from R. Schaefer, DM White Architects. We specialize in multifamily housing. This is right in our wheelhouse. Appreciate the opportunity to present this to you. Great, as has been said, great care and thought has been taken into account to make good use of this site and respect the area around it. When you move the buildings closer together, as shown there, you start to create outdoor spaces. And so when you do, you end up with is a nice defined area, an outdoor living courtyard, which is shown there, which will provide gathering areas for the residents. These are examples of what will be there, like a fire pit, water feature. And then in the back, there would be a plaza that they could use for social gathering. The connected area behind that is the community space, which is the community room, gyms, and leasing offices and things of that nature tying those two buildings together. This is a five-story building, but it's a true five-story in the sense of where you see it from the grade up. The parking garage below would not be visible from the site or only from a small area in the front. But generally, you would see it looking as it is there. We use large windows to help reduce the scale of the building, less impact in the area. It also provides wonderful light for the dwelling units inside. If you can go back to the rendering. The rendering, you can see at the top is the wide overhang eaves at the top to help cap the building and hold it tight down. And then added diagonal brackets there to give it some detail and connect that overhang back into the building. And then the elevation again, please. The horizontal length is broken up by the play of materials. At the base, we have the strong solid stone base with a color that would be representative of the site, the granite that's in the area. And we have the horizontal siding acting as a background in the middle. At the top, there's the vertical panels that create the end to the top. And then those are carried down at the entrances to help bring your eye towards the entrances, focus on where those are in the building, and then unique panels within that area to help emphasize those entrances. The overall scheme creates a mix of materials to break up the horizontal and vertical aspects of the building, break it down into the smaller aspects to relate to the dwelling units inside, relate to the person that lives there, gives them a more relatable aspect to the building. Each building, if you can go back to the rendering, each building will have its own entrance at this grade level. You'll see one on the right there. The building left has one facing the parking lot. Then the longer building has one at the far end. They all have their own entrances embracing the parking lot that, in this image, we would be standing in. So there are basically the three buildings. There's a small, medium, and large building, the small one being forty-four units, the medium one being sixty-three units, and then the large one being ninety-three units. The two buildings that we saw in the rendering, there's a corner piece of them that is taken up to make the community space. So it's not just that connected area. It works its way into the buildings on the sides. And then the units. The unit plans are going to be Class A apartments with upscale finishes, granite, complimentary cabinets, as you would expect, vinyl wood plank flooring, tile and carpet throughout, as you might see in a typical Class A apartment. Again, we have the large windows bringing in the great lighting for the units all around, working with an open space living plan to offer flexibility in a larger sense to the overall scheme. And I would just conclude by pointing out again that by having the garage mostly underground, the parking on the site is less than half of what you would expect to see for a project to this size. So therefore, it is a more visual appealing aspect by burying them underneath and give you more of a softer approach to the site and usability for the tenants. With that, I thank you very much.
Okay. And the last presentation is Mark Fugier, who will talk about the financial impact to the community.
Good evening, Mark Fugier. Fugier Plan Development, talking about the fiscal impact of this project on the community. Obviously, it's going to generate some tax revenue, but also with any new use on the community, there'll be demands placed on some town departments. So obviously, the first thing we looked at is tax revenue. We looked at some area apartment buildings to get comparable properties for value. Based on that, we have an estimated tax revenue of four hundred and eleven thousand dollars a year. Excise taxes will also be a revenue stream that will come out of the property on a yearly basis. So we're estimating approximately half a million dollars a year in income coming into the community as a result of this project that build out. On the municipal cost side, we reached out to some key town departments where we believe there'll be some measurable impact from this development that they will see, mainly being police, fire, and schools. I have a database of some thirteen hundred units that I track for both school-aged children, police calls, ambulance calls, and fire calls. And sitting down with both, chatting with both the police and the fire departments, I went over the data with them, showed them the compatible, comparable projects that I have in my database, the number of calls that are going to come into the departments. And they did not foresee a demand on their department that they couldn't handle or that they would see a staffing, need for more staff. I never put zero down as an impact. So based on a math, average math of calls, cost per call, looking at the budgets of the police and fire, came up with an estimate of some carry for both police at thirteen thousand dollars and fire department at twenty-seven thousand dollars. The other department is just a number I usually carry just for other costs that could occur for residents that live there. I also sat down with the school superintendent's office to talk about schoolchildren. That's usually a very significant concern in the community with this type of project. There's going to be estimated twenty-five school-aged children coming from this apartment complex. Again, it'll be a mix of market rate units and affordable units. Again, I have a database of thirteen hundred units that I use to generate that. I will tell you that the apartment building next door in Vista only has eleven schoolchildren in it. So it's a very small impact, even though there's affordable housing units on there. But I used an average from a greater gathering of apartment units to come up with twenty-five. The most noticeable impact on their budget is going to be the need for a new bus to service the area. So I carried that cost. They did not believe that they would need to add any staff, but to be conservative, we carried a cost of a teacher to cover that expense. we carried a cost of a teacher to cover that expense. Even with those expenses, we're still a positive fiscal impact on the community of approximately $300,000. Obviously, over time, things change, ebb and flow with the development, but overall, I think it's going to be a positive project. It's all private roads, all private trash. DPW's not going to have to go in there and take care of anything. So we believe overall, it's not going to be a significant impact on the community. Speaking of building permits, which you were talking about earlier, we expect to contribute approximately $360,000 to that fund for the building department. Obviously, there'll be other intangible economic benefits of having residents in the community visiting local businesses, including the downtown.
Okay, thank you. So we're open to questions. One thing I did want to say is that what we presented here is our suggestion, our recommendation, but the process is very fluid. We will be getting input from various people in the town, most importantly, the zoning board of appeals, so the project may look different than what you see tonight, and hopefully, it will be improved.
I want to thank you for making the presentation tonight. It was very informative. With that being said, Ian.
Yes, thank you. It was, and the handouts were excellent. So, I know this area well. I wouldn't say I'm a neighbor, but I'm across Prospect Street near Bear Hill, so this is a common way people access 128 or go to Reading. What has always amazed me is that the property on Summit Drive that's existing in Reading, when you're driving down Hopkins, you can't see it. It has a very low impact, even though on here, it looks so large. And I'm, and I think it's because of the placement of trees. I think it's because of the placement of how you enter the property. So when you go before ZBA, I'm hoping that this would be the same thing. The buildings look beautiful, but to drive by and not realize you have 190 units is kind of nice, too, that it seems buried a little bit in the neighborhood. I do have a concern, and I think this is probably going to be Reading's issue, in addition, maybe a little bit to Wakefield, but that's South Street. That can be really tricky. The South Street, going from Hopkins to South Street, it backs up with a lot of morning traffic because it is a cut-through. I imagine some neighbors will have some issues there, and I think it's going to back up into Wakefield, so I am sure ZBA or someone will deal with that. But I think it's important that we add affordable housing. What you've proposed looks, you know, I'm impressed with how you described the buildings, and I think, you know, we're hearing from our own people in Wakefield that want to downsize, that they're looking for these kind of units. So I'm impressed so far with your professionalism, all of you.
Thank you very much for those comments. We'll be engaging a traffic engineer.
I'm sure.
You know, to work on the traffic issues during the process, and we'll be sitting down, you know, with the fire chief and the police chief and traffic advisory on that. And as far as what you had said, we think this is a perfect location for this type of a development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony.
So if I'm reading this correctly, we have 58 two-bedroom units, 23-bedroom units, and we're only projecting 25 additional students in the school system. I gotta think those numbers are way off. We're potentially looking at anywhere between 50 and 100 students maybe impacting the school system. I don't think the Walton School can handle it, and we're taking that multimillion-dollar project that we're waltering right now and just throwing it out the window. So if I could ask you one thing, and that would be to back off the number of multi-units, the multi-bedroom units, maybe cut it in half, I'm concerned about the impact to the school system.
Can, Mark, can you come up and talk about how you arrived at 25? I think that's the initial inquiry that you would have.
It's a common question, obviously, everywhere we go. I mean, if you, in my full report, there's a list of all the area projects where I got the data from, Foxborough, Mansfield, Pembroke, Wilmington, Franklin, and Vista. I mean, Vista has 114 units with only 11 schoolchildren.
How many of those are multi-bedroom in Vista?
They're all two-bedrooms.
They're all two-bedrooms?
Yes.
The other question is you-
And by the way, can I say one thing? By state regulation, we are required to have 10% three-bedroom units.
Okay.
Okay.
So we could go to 19 units then. The other question is you factor in the cost per student at about $5,500. Is that consistent, what we see in Wakefield, Steve?
We run that at 13,000.
Okay.
13,000 students.
So we're only off by a little bit?
Well, the cost, I sat down with the school superintendent.
Okay. But you had the school cost at 138,000, correct?
Right.
At 25 students.
Right. But when a student comes into the school system, your budget doesn't go up by $13,000. It's not, it doesn't flow like that. There's a lot of factors, as you know, going, talking about budgets that impact the school system. If you're, you lost 34 students last year. Your budget's not going down.
We don't lose students in Wakefield. We, our numbers go up because of the school system.
Your enrollments went down by, overall enrollments went down 34 students.
No, they went down.
They went down?
Yeah, we do lose some students. We hope to ebb that, but we do.
So it's complicated, and that's why I sit down with the superintendent. I mean, if they had stated that we need three teachers or five teachers, that's what I, the cost I would have put in there. I didn't have to carry a cost for a teacher, but talking with them, I try to be conservative on my numbers and, you know, to cover that cost, and that cost came from her.
Yeah, I'm still not comfortable with those numbers with that amount of multi-bedrooms.
Ted?
A couple of things. I do have a concern about the Hopkins Street traffic, because I think this development is different than a lot of the others that we have, say, around the commuter rail, because we don't have public transport nearby this. It's somewhat isolated, so I think there's a reason that we have almost two parking spaces, you know, per unit in this complex, say, versus something, say, a North Ave, where we don't have the need for that. So I have a real concern about the traffic. I realize that'll be studied, but I think that's something that we have to be very mindful of with this. The other two pieces, one, you had mentioned about the water commitment that Reading had made. What sort of enforceability do you have? You say you have a Reading commitment. What does that mean from a legal perspective, though?
We, we want to talk about that for a minute, Chris. We have a letter, I believe Chris has gotten a letter, that water is available. We haven't worked out the, you know, the basic terms of the agreement, but, you know, we have a consensus with them.
Right, and that's a letter that Ted's referring to is a letter from the Water Department identifying the fact that they currently serve the 12 single-family homes and that they're prepared to continue providing water to the site. That was a preliminary letter from the Water Department, but as Ted mentioned, we're going to be sitting down with the town administrator and working out a formal agreement.
And then just back to the Hopkins Street traffic piece of things. Steve, what is our process in terms of making sure that, you know, the residents, especially on Hopkins Street, that would be impacted are where? Because, I mean, we're talking 190 units, you know, that's, and it's going to be almost entirely vehicular traffic.
I think it's actually going to impact Reading much more because they're not cutting through Wakefield. They're going to be cutting through Reading, and the traffic, I hardly, I do it every day. I hardly see any traffic, it's sporadic, coming out of the, these apartment, yeah, the units.
You don't see that, right?
It's the cut-through. It's using the cut-through. So I, because they're trying to avoid Prospect. They're trying to dump on 128.
Right, but I think-
It is. It's going to be Reading. I think it's going to be Reading.
This will be referred back to the traffic advisory, and we'll use VHB to do it, to, well, they'll do a study, and we'll review the study. What I'm going to request for that, because we've had some questions in that, that kind of, that corridor where Prospect meets Hopkins meets Brook, that whole thing, I'm going to ask that they look all the way to Prospect, because I want to see how that's going on there. And it may be that it's minimal, or maybe that we can make some tweaks there, but that is part of our process.
Because I'm just looking at the entry and exit for the underground piece, which it sounds like, I would imagine most residents will be primarily parking underground. But regardless, that entry and exit is on Hopkins, much closer, you know, much more into Wakefield, say, than South. So I'm just imagining a lot of people wanting to go to Redstone, and then go left on Hopkins, and then go down, and then take a right to Prospect, you know? So I can see, that's 190 units that people are not going to be walking, for the most part, anywhere based upon the site location, so I think we have to be very mindful of what the traffic impact would be. And the question's to you, you mentioned VHB. Who pays for that kind of traffic study?
We will, they do there as a little review, and we can make arrangements there as well.
Okay.
One thing that usually happens is that, once we do a presentation, then the town decides who they would like for peer review, and usually, we would contribute to that, and we would pay for the peer review, so that, you know, it may be an independent review by VHB of the report presented by our traffic. So that would not be an expense to the town, it would be the developer's expense.
I think, looking at it, too, I see that the views, it looks like, it's like, almost like Boston off in the horizon, but in achieving that, there's a ton of mature trees that it looks like you'd be taking down, and what would be the plan in terms of replacing those either onsite elsewhere or ensuring that you more than made up for the deficit elsewhere within our town?
We're going to have a very extensive landscaping plan, and that is one thing that the zoning board of appeals in Wakefield spends a lot of time and effort on. In fact, one member of the ZBA is a landscape architect, so they spend a lot of time making sure we have very good landscaping. I believe you have a person on staff that does that.
We do, and just to follow up, Mr. Dubrowski, you can see the trees that you're referring to right along the highway there to the south. Our focus on this project is going to be to try to, to try to provide a nice visual screen, especially for the folks that are butts. So the focus of our landscaping is going to be screening, and we're going to have a couple of tiers of it. The primary one, you know, in front of those, the condominium units that make up those 14, the ones that are right in a row, just to the north of us. And in that parking field, it doesn't show a lot of detail in landscaping right now, but we're going to have another, another row, if you will, in the middle of the parking lot that we're working on right now. In addition, Mr. Bonacorso, the developer, points out to us that the actual traveled way, where the actual pavement is on Hopkins Street, doesn't line up very nicely with, let's say, the property line of the road. So in other words, between the edge of the pavement and our property, there's also a very large, sort of no-man's land, that would be available for additional landscaping along Hopkins Street. And so with the town's permission, we'd love to landscape that up if the town allows us to do that, between, let's say, the edge of the pavement and where Building A is shown, the building closest to Hopkins Street. So we've got some work to do on the landscaping, but that'll be coming as part of our permit application to the ZBA.
Well, I realize, you know, that you're, that they're very good with landscape architects and the like. I think ultimately, given the footprint, if we just take the buildings and the parking lot alone on that site, you're obviously, you know, not going to have less trees. So if they all can't be made up on your own property, I think the idea of at least making sure that they're more than made up across the town as a whole, that would be important, certainly.
My only concerns on this are going to echo what's already been said. I travel Hopkins Street on a regular basis, because I take my wife to work in Reading, and I use Hopkins Street to access that one road. I do have a concern with South Street, because South Street is governed by a set of lights on Main Street, and most people use that as access to Hopkins instead of Cedar, because Cedar's notoriously, trying to make a left or right turn onto that road is very dangerous. The road condition currently is in bad shape, so I'm not sure how much of an improvement to the road would get done after the project was finished. Access into the underground garage, I'm just looking at it, would there be flashing lights warning people that there's a car coming out of the building, because that's going to be blind on, because it looks like the building's right up against Hopkins, pretty much. There's not much room there. So would there be some sort of warning system for people coming up or down to say that there's some sort of traffic coming out onto Hopkins at that one point? You won't need it on the parking lot side, but coming out of the building itself, being a blind spot.
Sure, that's a good question. We have the luxury, and it's just the way, the shape of the property lends itself to having favorable site distances. That's what you're referring to. So coming in or out of the property, we're on the outside of the curve, if you will, so the road property line sort of comes in like that. And so our mission is not to have a need, to have flashing lights, because there should be, with this geometry of Hopkins Street, adequate site distance in both directions. So that's something that the traffic engineers will be taking a closer look at.
And the only other last comment is the, once access into the parking lot, the fire apparatus going around there, would they be able to make that last turn in the back area? Is that going to be sufficient turning radius for our equipment?
Yes, and I can say that because we've analyzed it with this, with our particular software program that's commonly used across the industry. It's called Autoturn, and that's something that we, what we do, is it spits out sort of a path traveled. We can plug in specific specifications for different vehicles. We'll double-check with the fire department that we have the most up-to-date information, but they'll be the ones that review that.
I'm sure the ZBA is going to do another outstanding job on this anyway. They're going to go through this from one end to the other, so I, for one, appreciate you coming in and giving us this presentation. It was eye-opening, so, thank you. Any other further comments from the board?
So again, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I just want to make some points. Welcome to coming into Wakefield. People choose to make, to move to Wakefield because we have two commuter rail stops. I hear, I know where this location is, but if there's a way to have a shuttle bus that takes people to commuter rules, or like, we can continue talking about maybe changing the bus stops and going in this neighborhood, because I think that's what makes Wakefield attractive to people, and it would help with the traffic. So let's think about, as we talk about walkability and public transportation, let's figure out ways if we can partner together. I know a lot of newer units in Everett and Malden and Medford are doing shuttles, the closest shuttles, and that's something, if you guys could explore, would be great.
We'll look into that. Thank you.
It's very detailed.
It's very, it's a very good job everyone put together. Just a question in general with the actual costs. I know you mentioned the market, you know, is going to bear certain costs, but do you have any idea, like, the one, two, three bedrooms, the market cost per rental unit compared to maybe the 40B, or any idea on the, just the actual?
What's the rental coming?
So we can comment on that. At this time, the expected rental for the market rate units, it's really going to depend on when the units are constructed and what the market will bear.
Okay.
But the most important part is the affordable component part. So 25% of the rentals, those rates will be set by DHCD or mass housing.
Okay.
And it'll be deed restricted. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. And we'll actually be closer to those numbers when we file the application with mass housing. So we'll be sharing that application, you know, with Steve, so we'll be able to give you some more information to that effect.
So down the road.
Right.
Okay.
Because we have to do a pro forma to show that we don't exceed the profit limits that are set forth by mass housing.
Good. Thank you.
And let me say this, we have been working with Paul Rivas, and we've been working with Mike Collins, and we'll continue during the process to work with everyone in town, and we invite your participation. When we have some workshops, we'll let you folks know, and if one or more of you want to join the workshop for comment, we'd love to have you aboard.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciate it. So let us continue with the rest of the items on our agenda. Moving on, we have-
Five D.
Five D, right?
Yep.
Annual town meeting, date changed to April 30th, 2018. Mr. Mayo?
Yes, unfortunately, my math was off on town meeting. You guys should hire a town administrator that can count. And due to the charter, we do need to have town meeting on April 30th, beginning on April 30th, due to the kind of crazy way the charter names it out. So we'd ask the board to make that change, if they don't mind.
Motion to change the date to April 30th, 2018, for the annual town meeting.
So moved.
Moving second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We have a request to hang a banner for the Gallup, Gator Gallup 5K Run Walk from March 24th, 2018 through April 7th, 2018.
So moved?
Second. Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Item F, potential opioid litigation, Mr. Mullen.
Mr. Chairman, many communities, as you probably know across the country, are signing up with law firms to engage in litigation against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids to recover damages for the costs imposed on them by the opioid crisis. I've received numerous solicitations from law firms with respect to the towns I represent. I've been leery of getting involved, in part out of ignorance, in part because I'm not familiar with the out-of-state law firms that control the litigation, and because lawyers who specialize in plaintiff's class action lawsuits are an unsavory crew. One law firm has stood out for me, that's Scott &amp; Scott, because they partnered locally with the firm of Anderson and Krieger, and of course, we have hired Anderson and Krieger on several occasions, and we met with two of their lawyers tonight in executive session. I regard them as the cream of the crop of the municipal law firms in Massachusetts. Scott &amp; Scott is a firm of more than seventy lawyers headquartered in Connecticut, but with offices in three other states. On February twenty-eighth, Steve Mayo and I and Linfield Town Administrator Rob Dolan met with two of their partners. They specialize in class action lawsuits, they've done a number of them involving securities, antitrust, pharmaceuticals, a lot involving Bernie Madoff. They represent cities in five states in the opioid litigation, and in Massachusetts, they represent Worcester, Springfield, and Haverhill, among others. Their theory of the case is that manufacturers and distributors, knowing the dangers of addiction, promoted among doctors the idea of using opioids as routine pain relievers, rather than the end-of-life care they had previously been used as. Tactically, what they want to do is to avoid federal court, where literally hundreds of cases have been consolidated before a single judge in Ohio, who is urging quick settlement and resisting efforts to move the cases forward through motion practice or discovery. Their approach, that is Scott &amp; Scott's approach, is to file in state court, so we can control the litigation and move aggressively. They caution against hoping that state attorneys generals can accomplish anything for us. They point to the example of the tobacco litigation, where the only cities and towns that saw any tobacco money were the handful that filed their own separate lawsuits. Signing up with them, with Scott &amp; Scott appears to me to be risk-free. They offer a pure contingent fee arrangement whereby they would take twenty-two point five percent of any recovery as a fee, and they would front all expenses, which are chiefly expert witness fees. If there is a recovery, they would recover their expenses off the top, and I asked them, what if there is no recovery? What if it were a defendant's verdict? And they said that they would forgive the expenses, and they will so represent in the contingent fee agreement. I don't see how any defendant could assert a counterclaim, so again, I don't see a risk. I reviewed a complaint that they filed recently in Florida State Court. I thought it was very impressive and very thorough. It was a hundred and seventy pages, if I were representing the defendant, I'd be depressed just looking at it. And I like the idea of an active, aggressive posture. I would not recommend that we hire a firm that merely wants to park the case in Ohio before the federal judge who's consolidated hundreds. So I recommended Scott &amp; Scott to the Linfield Board of Selectmen last week, and they unanimously voted in favor, and I recommend the same to this board.
Any discussion from the board? So, which motion would you?
I think the motion would be to authorize the town administrator to sign an engagement letter with Scott &amp; Scott on the terms outlined by me.
Some more.
Moving, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, thank you, Tom. Next item on the agenda, request to accept and expend gifts to the library in the amounts of one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars from various donors with thanks.
Some more.
Moving, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Licenses and permits, we have a one-day liquor license for the Wakefield-Linfield Chamber of Commerce for Blossoms at the BB on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, from seven PM until eleven PM at the Lucius BB Memorial Library.
Some more.
Moving, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have another one-day liquor license for the Angel Fund for an event at the Subaru Wakefield on April sixth, two thousand and eighteen, from seven-thirty PM until eleven PM. Moving, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Third license, a one-day liquor license for Colleen Walsh for an event at the Americal Civic Center on March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from four PM until eight-thirty PM.
Some more.
Moving, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
This event happens on?
Yeah, to the nineteenth.
Oh, I thought I said the thirteenth, great, okay.
Yeah, it wasn't the thirteenth, yeah.
Warranty review and signing, Mr. Longo.
Nothing out of the ordinary, things like vehicle maintenance, school lunch programs, senior assistants, fuel for town buildings, every item is reviewed and questioned, if I have any questions, and Steve is always there to answer my questions.
Thank you very much. Matters not anticipated by the chairman within forty-eight hours of the meeting, let's go around the tables, that one is on my left.
Go for it, yeah. So I understand that Wakefield students are joining in with the national movement for a walkout to support, well, not even to support, just to lend their voice to an issue that, based on the multitude of school shootings. I want to say that I am unbelievably proud of our students. I wish the more voices, adult voices in this town indicated how proud they were. I just received a letter from student council members and the headmaster from a local school, it was Austin Prep, and the head of student council talked about how thoughtfully they were participating in the walkout to commemorate the seventeen lives lost. The headmaster followed it with a lovely note indicating how proud he was of these students to take this into consideration and to lend their voice. I think, you know, based on just what we're reading today, the national voice is doing nothing, they're doing less than what they promised a couple of weeks ago. My generation hasn't done anything about these school shootings, and I think I am so impressed with what these young people are doing, so thumbs up to Wakefield students for very respectfully doing, having a walkout. I talked to the deputy of the Fire Department with the police chief, with Steve Mayo, to ensure that this was going to be done safely, that our students were protected. I know some parents had some concern, which I believe, I understand, I don't know that it's founded, I would support my kids taking part in this in a heartbeat, and I know that the Fire Department, Police Department will protect our children for this, but I give them huge thumbs up for doing it.
Thank you.
Echo everything Ann just said about that. And then just an event coming up that I told Colleen that I would mention, she's created this great group in Wakefield called the Room to Write for Writers, and they are doing an event for young writers and illustrators, so speaking about the amazing students that we have in Wakefield. It is a meet and greet, Monday, March nineteenth, six to eight, at the Boys and Girls Club, which we all adore, in the teen room, so if you know a young student who is interested, eighteen and under, in writing or illustrating, send them there.
Thank you. Peter?
Well, it's springtime almost, I just wanted to reiterate that we take the storm. And the Han Street, Ted, I'd really like to get that free for the citizens, I still want to keep that on the burner like my lights on Farm Street, and free for everybody. I think the fifty-five thousand, we should give a little bit back, and I just want to keep that on the front burnout, Paul will keep it up there for me, but that's it for me.
Thank you.
Tony?
A couple of things, like, you know, with the Ann sentiments, I have Principal Colin Tony's letter that went out to the students last week for the walkout on March fourteenth, and I, you know, my daughter being one of the students that would walk out, I totally support her, I, you know, I'm all favor of, you know, responsible gun ownership, no one needs to go hunting with AK-47.
AR.
Oh, AR-47, AK, yeah. AR-15, AK-47. School is a safe place, you know, we did duck and cover drills, but I never worried about, and you and I, we went to high school together, we never worried about someone walking into the cafeteria and just, you know, yeah. But yes, I'm totally support-
I didn't know that Principal sent a letter, that's good.
Yeah.
Did they send it, all parents received it?
I'm assuming so, that went out to all Galvin families.
Excellent.
The other thing is, the Lady Warriors basketball team, just a great season. I've gotten to know many of the players, they are just a group of, you know, great example, role models, strong personalities, you know, love all of them, just a really, you know, great team, and, you know, I'll miss them next year, but there's another group coming in, so, great season, Coach Beavy.
Thank you.
Ed?
I think the events in the Florida school are just another reminder to us, too, of the importance of mental health programs in our schools, and that's something that I know we've spoken about here before, but it's, I think it's so imperative that we provide the services that are needed in a twenty-first century academic environment, and frankly, we were needed many decades ago, but we're not available. So while we've made great strides, I think there's still more work to be done, and so I'd like to see that happen. On a different note, March is White Ribbon Month, and Wakefield Alliance Against Violence is sponsoring an event on Thursday, the twenty-second, to have men take the pledge to end gender-based violence, and so you'll see a lot of white ribbons on folks' lapels, and it's for an important purpose to make the issue of domestic violence front and center, it's so important. I mean, October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, but this white ribbon campaign, I think it's a really unique opportunity for this town to remember and be reminded of how much work has been done to try to curb this epidemic, but also how much work remains to be done, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen?
Mr. Mayo? I just got an update, update from DPW Director Stinson, thirteen to fifteen inches.
Oh, it went down?
So.
Nice.
I hope that went down.
Still thirteen inches.
Too much, yeah.
That it, sir?
That's it.
And I have no comments tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some more.
Moving, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and good night.